To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a little change of agenda. We might, well, we'll start with our COVID update, but then we might go to, or we can do contractors license, and then we'll go to board member reports. Bob's over in court for that dog hearing, so we'll wait for him to get back to what would transfer development rights and code revisions. So Amber, any updates on COVID?
Yes, our number this week is eighty-one, so we did have a new COVID case reported on the island this week. So we just broke our streak for a few weeks, and the positivity rate, the seven-day rolling average for Suffolk County is at three point two percent this week, so it's down from three point five percent this week. So overall, it's still, we're still trending in a good direction. I always hate seeing another case pop up.
Okay, and I have been in touch with Stony Brook Southampton Hospital. They're looking to find a date for us to do the booster shot on Shelter Island, so we can, you know, get as many people in as possible. So I just asked us, give us a couple of dates, so we can see if we can line something up with the school, if we can work together and get that done. So as soon as we hear back from them, we'll let everybody know. And that's that. Next on the list is the contractor license I had put out to, I had asked Christina to put out on social media, all our social media sites, and we put it at the building department, and we put it on the scale house, and they were handing it out at the scale house for any contractors that would like to come and discuss it before we, you know, we set the, we had the hearing before we act on it at the next town board meeting. I kind of thought the room would be filled today, but there's nobody here. So again, just a quick synopsis. No, my proposal is to increase the contractors license fees, also to include landscapers in the licensing process. There's a few reasons to do this. One is to make sure it's an even playing field, that everybody that, you know, works within the town is licensed, is insured, is covered, to protect the people that they're working for. Two is to generate a source of income for the town, because my emphasis has been on user fees, trying to take as much off the tax burden as possible where we can use fees specific to certain users to go there. And third, to use those fees that we're generating to beef up the building department with both a full-time code enforcement officer and an additional part-time clerk in the building department. So that was the reasoning for doing this. Couple of concerns, I highlighted a few things. No license shall be required under this chapter in the following instances. Any individual who performs labor or services for a home improvement contractor licensed under this chapter. In other words, if you're a sub working for a contractor, you don't have to get your own license, as long as the overall job is done. And then another big one is any home improvement where the aggregate contract price of all labor materials and other items is less than five hundred dollars. So sometimes you'll say, well, you know, I'm a handyman, I'm doing a little bit of this, a little bit of that. We're not going after those type of things, we're going after legitimate businesses that, you know, that do work.
With the five hundred dollar aggregate, Jerry, that's...
That's a...
For project?
For project, yes. Yeah, any home improvement, yeah.
Is that a sufficient amount of money based on today's cost of doing business?
I think it is. Again, I'm in business, and you know, this directly affects me, and I think it's, it's fair. I understand it. And you know, I also understand people will say, well, you know, I'm a small, you know, you know, I cut lawns after work, I've only got, you know, ten to fifteen lawns. Charge them all a twenty-five dollar surcharge once, and there's your fee. You know, again, it's the cost of doing business. The other thing we hear is, and I know you've heard it, we've all heard it, well, in Southampton, they charge two hundred dollars for two years, or Southhold, they charge us. You know, that's a double-edged sword. A lot of times when we talk about legislation, we'll bring up, this is what Southhold does, or this is what East Hampton does, and we'll hear right away, well, we're not Southhold, we're not Southampton, we're not East Hampton. So that goes both ways. You know, they, you know, they are much bigger areas, and they have a much bigger pool to generate their funds from. And again, I don't think this is financially a burden to anyone. I think it's, if anything, it's a, it's a boost to the taxpayer in general. So I feel very strongly about this. Some of the other requirements I highlighted, so when you come for your license, we want a federal tax ID number, or New York State sales tax identification, we want a registration for each vehicle, because we're gonna put stickers on the vehicles, we want proof of liability insurance, we want proof of workers' comp, and this is a big one that, part of it's in here, but part of it we'll have to discuss, as we talked about this winter. Any applicant who will be applying fertilizer, pesticides, fungicide, herbicide, or other pesticides, any other chemical agent must provide proof of licensing by annually required federal, state, or county agency. Any required training or continuing education, including Suffolk County turf management training. So the turf management training is basically for anybody in the landscape business that applies fertilizer. That's an online course, it's a, it's like a four or six-hour course you can take. The other ones, you have to have, you know, you have to be licensed, and we want proof of the licensing if you're gonna be putting down pesticides. Okay, so again, that's it. I know Jim had brought up the concern that, you know, maybe going from, you know, a hundred dollars a year to two fifty, a hundred dollars, two fifty is too much in one year, maybe we should ease our way in. I think we should just do it. I think it's, you know, again, I don't think it's, it's crippling. I think it's, I keep saying it's part of doing business. I, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Anybody else have any feelings?
The, the, let me get back to the five hundred dollar, that's a total?
Yes, per job.
Per job.
Yeah.
Per project.
Per project. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here, Al, if you want to see.
Yeah, my, my comment, as Al's reading through that, is don't judge this piece of legislation by one thing. There's a lot of very, very good things that are in here, that people have been asking for years about leveling the playing field for off-island versus island workers. The workman's compensation, the liability, proof of liability, these are things that actually protect homeowners too. So when you hire a company that doesn't provide workman's compensation, or has no liability, and that person taking down the tree falls out of the tree, and he was a homeowner, could, could come back to haunt you. So these, these are important things, and I particularly support the liability, the workman's compensation. I do think it's time that we do license people that are applying pesticides. I think the CAC has asked for that for years. I think environmental people here on the island have asked for that for years. The shell fishermen have been very concerned about the abuse of pesticides and not having any regulations whatsoever, especially in the wetlands or near wetlands areas. So I look at this legislation as a multifaceted thing, that it contains a lot of meat and potatoes in it, and I'm not judging it, you know, by any one thing. You know, as Jerry said, I would have preferred to probably phase in the thing, but I understand his point of view also. I'm just hoping that if this goes into effect, or when it does go into effect, that we hold that cost, you know, for the next, you know, quite a few years. I wouldn't want to see that touched and go up. And I do believe, I don't particularly like the term cost of doing business, I like the, I just think it's, I think, I think it's fair for what this town is trying to do, especially when it comes to the recycling center, especially when it talks about, and there's provisions in here that I like, that you added, the subcontractor thing, I like that. I think that's a good, a good add-on. A project that's, you know, a few hundred dollars, I like that, I like that as well. And I do think that overall, I know people don't like to see taxpayer money go into enforcement type of thing. This does help in terms of trying to support enforcement, and it's one of the things that we've been most criticized for, for a lack of enforcement. I just hope that, once we do this, and we have a full-time enforcement officer, that in fact, that's what that person will be dedicated to, and follow through, and do an excellent job, and get us, you know, to the level that we feel comfortable that things are being enforced across the board, you know, equally, you know, no partisanship.
I think one of the other things you brought up, Jim, that I didn't really touch on is the, at the landfill, what we're doing, and what I mentioned about, you know, having to show your, license and registration for the vehicles, you'll get, you'll get stickers for all your work vehicles, and when you go to the landfill, you'll pay the landfill price, whatever it is. If you go there as an unlicensed contractor, you're gonna pay the fee, plus you're gonna pay a daily surcharge of seventy-five dollars to use the landfill. So that's...
And that makes sense to me, that makes sense to me too. I think that's fair.
And that's what other towns do, if they even let them dump their, other towns.
Yep. So it'll be the vehicle that's stickered?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so when a truck comes through, and they can see?
Yeah, and, and yes.
Depending on the size of the vehicle.
Yeah, and, and, no, the vehicle, each, each vehicle will be stickered, but then each vehicle will go and get a tear weight from, at the scale. So when they go over, you know, they don't, because, you know, leaf season, that was one of the things that, you know, concerns us, you know, its volume in and out, in and out. So they don't have to get weighed, then have to go back and get weighed again. So with sticker, we'll have a number on it, and they'll have the tear weight of that vehicle on it, so they can just go once and then...
And that, and that makes sense, for both them and us, because the traffic in there from November, November, December, early January, is huge. And we're not talking hundreds of it, we'd be talking several thousand visits. There's, there's just a lot of activity. So you can cut that in half, and have the person go to the scale just one time, that's much, much better, right?
Okay, anything else?
I'm just looking at my notes in here. Of course, I can't read my handwriting. I had a note that, the question was, do we want commercial contractors to be licensed? And then it was, I think explicitly covered in the prior section seventy-nine. So I think there's something, I'll have to go back and double-check, but something seemed as if the wording had changed. It looks like it wasn't comprehensive enough.
Okay.
But I'll take a look at that, and I'll pass it on to Bob. I think this is another Bob question, in the home improvement definition, under Article one, seventy-nine, four. It's like, as defined in Section three ninety-five A of this chapter. So it looks like this was lifted from something, because we don't have a three ninety-five A.
This one?
Yeah, so, next page. So under E, yeah, the Section three ninety-five A of this chapter.
Okay.
So I think it just, it looked like maybe it was something when it was drafted.
Okay, so we, yeah. Probably a lot of cut and paste that we need to...
I think you did. And then if you look at I, exceptions, so seventy-nine, six, exception. I looked like it could get merged with D, because it was talking about architects, professional engineers, but up in D, it also talks about...
Right, professional engineer, right, okay.
And then, okay, sorry.
And the... Go ahead.
K, in that same section, it says, who transacts business from an establishment, and I thought it should be from the contractor's place of business. So any retail clerk, electrical, administrative, or other employee of a licensed home improvement contractor who trans, transacts business from an establishment, just seemed odd.
So...
The wording just...
Yeah, so leave it to Bob to change it, or you, what's your recommendation?
The contractor's place of business.
Okay.
It can, seventy-nine, thirteen, I've got some other nits and nats, I'll just pass on to him, but seventy-nine, thirteen, Section D, license shall, a license issue pursuant to this chapter shall be conspicuously posted in the place of business of the license.
Sorry, thirteen, which it...
Oh, um, D, I'm sorry. I thought that that was a duplicate of K, and that it could be deleted. Because it's talking about posting on all vehicles, but then K also talks about displaying on vehicles.
So eliminate D?
I just, I think the section about...
I just highlighted them both.
Yeah, I wasn't sure why we needed, like, why somebody had to post at their place of business.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, it's really the vehicles that count.
Yes.
And then also my comment on seventy-nine, thirteen, G, all advertising for home improvement contracting shall contain the license number of the home improvement license issued pursuant to this chapter.
Yeah, I wasn't crazy about that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we really gonna spend time, you know, enforcing that on advertising?
Yeah.
The people have the same end, it just gets...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was accomplishing anything, unless, you know...
It's also one of those, as Jim said, you know, how are you gonna enforce it? Are we gonna be, you know, reading the ads every week and seeing, yeah.
And also, I mean, I guess if there's, you know, public, you know, if the public's concerned about people being properly licensed, they should ask the contractor before they hire them.
Right, and they can check with the town if they have, you know...
Yeah, and, and by and large, people do not ask.
Right.
They don't want to know, I don't think.
Well, some do.
Well, so, you know, just saying that, that they may feel by not knowing, you're not liable, but if you, by not knowing, you know, something happens, they're gonna sue everybody.
As Tony said last, we'd be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
And then, I think the last, seventy-nine, forty, under penalties.
Yep, which one?
C. Just any contract, any contractors to find here and who advertises, okay, so yeah, that part would have to come out if we take the advertising piece. And and then also D, any contractors to find here and operates a vehicle in the town shall try without a valid license sticker, shall be, shall upon conviction be punishable. So I mean, another thing, like, are we gonna drive around and...
Yeah, and again, to me, the sticker is more, yeah, it's more a benefit to the contractor to have it for the use on the scale. I mean, I think that trucks, for the most part, have signage on it, the building department's gotta know that they're right, yeah.
Yeah, and then that would also apply to E as well. I just think that's another one where, if somebody's utilizing a vehicle without a sticker...
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
It just, it just seems like it's enforcement that's not gonna happen, so why even have it?
Yeah, and it kind of defeats the purpose of what we're, you know...
That's it, the rest are like little nits and nats, you know, typos and stuff, pass on to Bob.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody in the audience have, any questions on this one? Gotta be honest, I thought there'd be more people here to talk about it, but...
It is a beautiful day throughout work.
Yeah, everybody's on mute, so I can't tell if anybody wants to speak in the Zoom. Okay, we'll assume nobody wants to speak. Shouldn't assume, I know. Okay, we're gonna hold off on town code and transfer development rights until Bob gets out of court. So I'll start around the table. I, as I think everybody knows, the governor signed the legislation before that the Assembly and the Senate had passed regarding the Affordable Housing Act, in regard to the additional half percent transfer tax to go into place. The next, I got in contact with Fred Deal about it, the next step is the towns have to put in place their housing plan. He, Fred will be addressing it at the next East End Supervisor Mayor's meeting, exactly what that means. I spoke to him just to toss out there the concept of, you know, is it possible that, once we have that housing plan in place, we can put out a referendum to, you know, because every town has to vote on this, just like we did the original two percent transfer tax. And I said, is it, is it feasible to put out a refer, a special referendum to vote on this, so we don't have to wait a whole year till Election Day twenty-twenty-two to vote on this, to approve it, and then wait till twenty-twenty-three to actually collect it? Because as, as Jim had mentioned, that one of our previous meetings had this have been in place, when Governor Cuomo first vetoed it, we have, you know, well over a million dollars in our fund. So Fred said, you know, certainly anything's possible, just, let's do our homework, let's walk slow, let's not rush into, you know, doing a referendum, let's, you know. So when we meet in November for the East End Supervisor Mayor's, we'll get a real plan of what we, what we need to do moving forward on it. But it's good news, it's, it's, you know, the governor, you know, realized, you know, how important it is to us out here.
And then you might even want to comment, Jerry, on the good interviews that we've had for the housing, Community Housing Board itself, that we...
We, we appointed to the Housing Board, we have a very good group, they're chomping at the bit to get started. So again, the first thing, I'll do a little online research about, you know, what the governor's looking for in the housing plan, then we'll convene that group to get started on that housing plan. So we have some documentation to start with.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
When, the next East End Mayor's and Supervisor's, is that a Zoom meeting?
Uh, yeah, there are also meetings.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they returned in person yet, okay.
Yeah.
Are you on that one then?
You always do.
No, I didn't on the last one. Because I just wanted, like, two sets of years, let's...
Yeah, right, oh, definitely.
How the pan's gonna be.
Just a general comment to pick up on, Jerry, what he just said about those candidates that we had that interviewed for the Community Housing Board. In my six years of being here, we've, this has been, probably in the last three to four weeks, other than the Community Housing Board, across the, across all committees, we've interviewed some very, very, very good people. So, you know, volunteerism is up, and the quality of candidates that we're getting are excellent, and I'm very optimistic about the future of filling all our vacant seats, which, you know, and I think people are coming in to these committees with the right attitude, are really wanting to make a difference, and that, that gets you excited. You know, people are committed to want to, to carry out the mission of that, of that particular committee. So I'm, I think overall, right, guys, we're...
No, no, it's been great, yeah.
It's been, it's been excellent.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have, around the table. Jimmy, wanna start?
Sure. Veterans Day is coming up, and Dave Clark, our commander of Legion Post two eighty-one, put a little thing in the paper, reminding everybody that Veterans Day, of course, is just a matter of about four weeks away. If you have a veteran family member from Shelter Island would like to purchase a placard to go on the Center Island out front here, for Veterans Day, please see what is needed. What is needed is American Legion Placard information, the full name of the individual, the branch of service, a twenty-dollar check payable to Mitchell Post two eighty-one, that's P O Box twenty twenty-one, Shelter Island, New York, one one nine six four. So it's a twenty-dollar check made out to Mitchell Post two eighty-one, P O Box twenty twenty-one, Shelter Island, New York, one one nine six four. If you would like to become a member, and we are starting to pick up membership, unfortunately, we've had a lot of deceased in the last several years. So we, as we are losing members, we're picking members up. But the exciting part is, we're picking up a lot of the young, young men and women that served in the military in the last ten to fifteen years, which is exciting, you know, and it means the Legion Post is gonna be around. So if you're interested, as new member to join, here's a telephone number to call for Dave, Commander Clark. The number is six three one, seven four nine, one one eight zero, and just leave a message for Commander Clark, he will get back to you.
We have this ready.
But please just make sure with the placards that you get that information in as soon as possible. And by the way, we put those placards out for both Veterans Day and Memorial Day, but obviously, on Memorial Day, we are honoring veterans who have passed. For Veterans Day, we are honoring both, and particularly for veterans that are living and deceased. So we, we put out more placards, obviously, for Veterans Day than we do for Memorial Day, because there are more, more of them. Second thing is a note from the FIT Center. So yesterday, during the budget meeting, we talked about the senior, senior group, you know, sixty-five or seventy-five, I've been playing with that. So Bethany got back to me, and of course, the current rate is two fifty-five. That averages out to four dollars and ninety cents per week at the current rate. If you do it, divide it by a month, twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per month. If we, if we were to lower that to one fifty, for sixty-five and older, we would lose approximately five thousand dollars worth of rep, five, exactly five thousand dollars. We have currently fifty members in the FIT Center that are sixty-five and older. We have forty-three members that are seventy-five and older. So if we went with that for just seniors, seniors, seventy-five and older, which I'm quickly approaching, we'd lose four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars in revenue. So then, she just wanted to make that clear to everybody, those are the numbers, okay? For the first one, if we put it at sixty-five, we would...
For a second, I just want to get my budget book out, so I can...
Yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna give you that.
Okay, all right, keep going then, sorry.
I'll give you that right there. The last thing I have is, I think it's time for the, for the town board to meet with our town engineer, and I know Jerry and I have met, but I think we probably need to sit down. Where, where it is, Joe would say, a crossroads for this, for the Heights Treatment Plant, and there's a lot, and we got a, you know, a very good concise email from Stella Legoudas, who's the General Manager for the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation, on the different directions that we could be moving. I would feel more comfortable having the input of Amber and Albert, along with Jerry, the town engineer and I, the, the five of us sitting down, looking at these options, and figuring out how we want to go forward with that. But there are some good options here. I don't want to read them, all those options out here now, I'd rather have them discussed, you know. All right, and, but we are at a crossroads, and, and there are quite a few options, by the way, you know, deciding on whether we recharge, or we irrigate, or we go to a different spot to do that, or we take in Bridge Street, or we don't take in Bridge Street, you know, and how we move forward with that. And, and funding things about if we had to have another feasibility study, who would fund that? How would that be funded? So there's a lot of decisions that have to be made. But, but we need to sit down now, and, and, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's, the five plus.
I would say, I would say, let's schedule that for a work session.
Okay.
Let's schedule it for after Election Day, because the day after Election Day, we're gonna appoint a new council person.
Okay.
So that we'll have the fifth person, so we can...
Okay.
Move forward with it.
Right, that would be, that would be good, Jim. All right. So that's, that's pretty much, pretty much it for me. And tonight, Albert's gonna sit in on me for the WMAC, yeah, I'll be scheduled something, I have to be, you know, but I have all the stuff to give to him for that. Yeah, Margaret scheduled something that I have to be at, you know, but I have all the stuff to give to him for that. For that meeting, so we'll go over that before we leave.
So just make sure we have, whatever we have to have for. Whatever hearings we set that we, you know, cover those, and I know we have the Ram Island Dock application we're discussing. Okay, Amber?
Um, Planning Board met last night. I don't know, Albert, if you want to speak about the White Subdivision Amendment that finally went through. So things can start to proceed with respect to CPF during the acquisition, I guess. I don't know the exact next steps, but that was a nice hurdle to get through. And then the other thing that just sort of came up was they had mentioned at the, at the end of the meeting after like the regular business was done. Just that we had a wetlands application where somebody needed to replace their, the foundation and. There was some concern about de-watering. And it was pointed out that our town code only has de-watering in it for pools. And I think that we need to amend the code to.
We, we need to amend the code, but the resolution for that particular project specified no de-watering, period.
Yes, yes, so the town was covered there, but if someone doesn't have to go for wetlands or special permit.
Right.
Then we usually do put in something about de-watering, but it didn't occur to me that.
Yes.
A regular, you know, building couldn't go under the radar.
No, it, it has occurred to me and I, and it's passed, we, we need to jump on that.
That's all that I had.
Okay. Albert?
The Water Quality Improvement Board met. They approved the Raza application. For IA system insulation on Dyna Rock Road. They approved the, the, the grant, seventy five hundred dollar grant was unanimously approved by the board. The house currently built in sixty four has a lockcess pool, so this is kind of. A nice, a good insulation. The, the other piece of business they had, you know, the W Q I things have kind of slowed down. So they're only going to schedule to meet the first Thursday of the month. Depending on the workload, they will follow up with a second meeting if, if necessary. But otherwise, right now, they're just planning on meeting the first Thursday of the month. That's all I have here.
Okay, and just a little bit of a follow up on that, Albert, is October twenty eighth, we have the meeting scheduled in Yapp Bank. With the county executive county, executive, the deputy county executive and the Board of Health. And our, our. Representatives from this watershelterisland.com group. Nature Conservancy will be there. Group for the East End will be there. I'm not sure which other members are gonna be there. I invited W Q I Chairman, I invited the W A C Chairman. Jen Messiano, our grant writer, will be there. And, and the emphasis for this meeting is gonna be on. Funding, basically, you know, we want to get a commitment from them on funding the county and the state. That, you know, we're gonna make a long-term commitment to this program. We want them to do the same.
And one other little thing that we, we were not gonna. We're, we're pretty much through. Joe, Finora, the town engineer, Albert and I met on the IA Systems on that number, old number three. Which is our new number, probably four now or, or five, depending on how we, if we eliminate that one, it'll be the new number four. That we'll add to it and we'll, we'll be prepared to brief you on that the coming, coming weeks. We just give it that one last look, the three of us. And we're, we're pretty much in agreement that we think we've got something that closes a lot of the loopholes. And is something that's consistent with what the county is trying to do across Suffolk County. And is consistent with some of our neighbors here on the East End. And I think it's, I, I think it's pretty darn good, you know, I think we put a lot of work into that and. I, I think the three of us have general agreement that this is, we need to get the two of you on board. If you wanted to wait till after the election to have the fifth person weigh in on that. You know, that would be your choice, but I think we're just gonna be prepared to share that with you guys in the coming days, you know. And, and so that the two of them get to see it, then if you guys have any questions about that. You know, we could sit down and discuss it, you know, a little further, but. I think in fairness, it's, it's, I don't think we have to worry about, you know, after this legislation is passed. I don't think we have to talk about IA Systems for the next two to three years. I think, hopefully. Because I think it really does. Do what we want it to do and encourages and maximizes opportunities to get these things in the ground. And that's what we're trying to do, so. You know, and, and it's fair, you know, it covers that little, little things that we talked about that I objected to. Remember when I used my finishing off part of the basement, you know, that kind of thing. Well, like, that, you know, we've taken that into consideration, but we've taken other things into consideration. That Albert was, you know, pretty strong on, and I think Joe is, you know, when I have weighed in on that, we've looked at that, we've reworded some things. I think it's pretty, pretty good, if I do say so myself. But you want to say anything else?
Yeah, no, I compromised, so that's probably a good thing right there.
Well, that's.
But I think it, I think it's something that we did work on and, and developed. I think it's good. And it most definitely is something that's needed. I mean, that. It's kind of, we, we have to do this. I, I, can we, I'd like to put it on the agenda for that next week.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because our next.
Yeah, Albert's gonna be, Albert's gonna be away.
Yeah, because our next town board meeting is the twenty second, so we wouldn't have it ready for.
Twenty eighth of discussion.
Yeah, the twenty sixth is when we could. Yeah, because I'm saying the town board meeting, like, I'm thinking in terms of, like, you're saying wait till after the election, but we can start talking about it before the election.
Oh, yeah.
It's not gonna make.
Was it the twenty eighth?
Uh, the meeting's the twenty sixth. Yeah, because it wouldn't be set for a public hearing until November twelfth, and then it wouldn't actually have a public hearing until December. So we'll have, we'll have the election results by then, so that somebody new can start to weigh in.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Again, we're kind of holding off. Bob's in court right now on a drug matter, on a dog matter. We were gonna have a special meeting, but we're not gonna have it, and I'll tell you why. The first thing we were gonna do is appoint the department head. Craig Wood resigned as the department head of the Assessor's Office. In reality, he's not the department head. There is no department head. He's the head of the Board of Assess, he's the chairman of the Board of Assessors. So that we have to discuss how, you know. And apparently, the assessors appoint the board of chairman, not the town board.
The town board appoints the chairman.
We pick them, I, I, I got the impression.
In January of every year is when you appoint.
Yeah, we appoint them, but I think it's at their, I think they're the ones.
Maybe they do.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we have to have a meeting with the assessors, how we're gonna move forward with that. So that's number one. Two, transfer of funds, this has to do with why Bob's in court right now. As you know, we had a case where we. Confiscated. We, we took in eighteen dogs from a house. One of them had to be put down because it was very sick. The remaining dogs were put in shelters. We're getting bills for the shelters. They want to be paid, they have to be paid. We knew that going in. It's costing us apparent about five hundred dollars a day for all these dogs. We're in the process of. Four of the dogs were adopted. We, we got.
Placed.
Placed, we had approval from the owner that, you know, we could place some of these dogs. They were placed so that, that shelter wants their money now for the time spent. So we're in the process of.
Just out of curiosity, Jerry, that four dogs that were placed in homes, were they four different homes? We, do we know?
I, I, apparently, I think it was an agency that took them in.
Oh, an agency.
Yeah, yes. I don't know the specifics.
That adopted them.
Yeah.
Put them up for adoption.
Yes. So, so what we're doing now is, is we're making sure that. The town's gonna get billed, we're gonna pay it, but we want to make sure there's recourse that down the road, we get reimbursed. Whether it's, you know, directly from the, the original dog owner. Or if it's through a lien on the property or whatever, so that's one of those.
Restitution.
Yes, yes, Bob's in court today for that, so we'll hold off on that one. Then the last one was approve the phase two environmental site assessment. We have the phase one study for twelve South Ferry Road. This is where the old highway pond, where we wanted to get a environmental assessment on it, and we got the first one. And now the recommendation was for a phase two study, so, so we're gonna approve that, but we're not ready to. We didn't write the resolution because it's been a little hectic, so we'll do that for.
So this is to go up for the R F P?
Yes, yes. And that's all I have. Again, we can kind of stall a little to see, I don't know how long Bob's gonna be in court.
He just sent an email and said that he's, the court is going long.
Long, okay. All right, so let's open up the questions from the.
Yes.
What he answered.
That's appropriate.
Anybody have any? Julie, you have anything for us?
I'm cleared, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, again, I thought, I thought it was gonna be a little more active meeting, but I guess not. Anything else, anybody want? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Shelby and I can go work on the fund balances.